What's up?
It's about four minutes.
We gotta go by that clock. So, we'll go by that clock at seven o'clock. No, I think it's about three minutes fast, but...
It is.
The official timer. Don't have to... You want to get started since that's our official...
Maverick.
Counter clock, or... What do we do?
That's fine. You're the chair.
Well, here, I'll wait thirty seconds and split the difference. Go on then, early on. Late on that, so... Alrighty, we'll go ahead and go slowly. Call the regularly scheduled meeting, the August sixteenth meeting, the Bel Air City Council Order, and we'll report, please, call roll.
Dr. Ramona Becker?
Here.
Grandma Donald?
Here.
Betty Martine?
Here.
Maggie O'Donnell?
Here.
Diane Nguyen?
Here.
We have a form here.
Wonderful, thank you. And with all of our meetings, if you had a joint, in a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Now, please rise and join saying the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up before council is, in addition to the agenda, our city manager, Mr. Lasher, has requested that item J, which is accepting a bid from the Kansas paving for Rock Spring Phase Four, be added to the agenda. Is there a motion to accept this?
Still moved.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Then our consent agenda has minutes for two meetings. First, our regularly scheduled August second city council meeting, and then the minutes of the August ninth meeting are simply with the legal meeting, right, to have where we have the public hearing for the budget. So, those are before you this evening. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize mayor to sign.
Second.
We have first and second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I wasn't here for the August ninth, but I did watch it twice, so I believe I should go ahead and vote on it, so, okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, moving right along, is appropriations ordinance sixteen dash sixteen in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and three dollars and thirty cents. Just to kind of pull a few of those out, because I know, try to explain the appropriations every once in a while, but ninety-two thousand of that was for salaries, six thousand of that was for some replacement equipment at the rec center. A big one, one hundred and sixty-five thousand of that was to CC UA for our debt service payment, and thirty thousand were for the overcharges, and twenty-eight thousand were for the Oliver Culvert replacement, the rest for daily operational costs. And again, I'd just like to say thank you to all of our staff, especially Ted, Tim, Terrence, Ty, whatever you want to call them, who works on that, to have that to every penny.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance sixteen dash sixteen.
Second.
We have first and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I don't have any city requested appearances. I do have, what did I just do with it? Hold on, beg your pardon here. We did have a citizen, here it is, who asked to address council, Lou Hendricks. If you'd come forward to the podium and state your name and your address, and would ask if you keep comments under three minutes, if you're able.
Mayor Austin, city council members, city manager. I'm Louis Hendricks, Lou. I live in Bel Air Town House Owners Association, forty-seven oh-three Hedro Court. And they're in that association, basically retired, retired as senior citizens, retired centers, senior citizens. I brought with me some support back here, some of the Bel Air citizens living here in Bel Air. And the association's in there about fifteen, sixteen years, and the transportation coming off of Forty-Fifth Street going up Hedro, going up to the rec center. Well, of course, the rec center is blockaded, and it's not traffic completely through there. But coming off of Forty-Fifth, the sunrise, and then coming around onto Hedro, we have a lot of traffic there. And so, I think it would behoove the city of Bel Air to want to improve that street there because of the traffic, and for the citizens that are living there in that association. So, we kind of got together and have a petition here. It's nothing law-abiding or anything. We understand that maybe this next year you might have some money. And Hedro is in pretty bad shape, if you drive up that street. And so, it probably needs to be, have a new surface put on it. But there are two cul-de-sacs that are city streets that go into the homes there, and probably, if those were treated similarly as you've treated the street out here around the courthouse, probably would be adequate to seal up the cracks and so forth, so that we don't have a big problem down the road. Because with all those cracks and ISIS winter and expansion, it gets worse as time goes on. So, what we're asking for is that the city of Bel Air take a look at Hedro there and consider resurfacing that street for us. And I have signatures here from the people that live along the south and east side of Hedro, plus all of the people that live in the Bel Air Town House Owners Association. So, that's our purpose here, to bring that to your attention tonight, and we appreciate whatever you can do for us. And I'll just leave this with the city manager.
Well, Mr. Hendricks, thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing your concerns. We're going to talk about our budget here in just a minute. I am pleased to report that there is some extra money in there for roads. I will admit, I've not looked ahead to see exactly which ones are scheduled to be, to get attention this year. But I know we have our city engineer and the public works who are out quite a bit, and they keep track of the roads and kind of where they are shape-wise. So, certainly, we'll make sure that they see this and take a look at it.
We'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this concern before the council this evening. Are there any other council members you'd like to...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, Mr. Hendricks. In addition to resurfacing Hedro, is there anything else that you and your colleagues have noticed that should be, in your opinion, improved or replaced, perhaps a stop sign, or perhaps a yield sign, perhaps a curb, perhaps other similar type things?
Well, Forty-Fifth Street, down the pike's going to be an issue for you, because a school is starting again at Forty-Fifth and Oliver, with all the traffic at the junior high school. That proves to be a monster in the evening, plus all the traffic that comes out at quitting time, at Coke as well affects Oliver. And so, I think probably down the pike between maybe Bel Air and city of Wichita, they're going to have to consider lights at that intersection, as well as maybe at Woodlawn and Forty-Fifth Street. A lot of traffic increasing there as well. And then, of course, I'm sure in the future that you're going to have to do some widening and expansion of Forty-Fifth Street. And it's, it's pretty rough. I think all of you have driven the street there, so you know what I'm talking about in regard to that. And of course, that's where we're exiting off of that, then up Hedro. And Hedro, as you go up that hill, it's pretty well chewed up, so have a chance, drive up that street, and you'll have an opportunity to see what we're dealing with.
I will do that. I haven't been there recently. You may or may not be aware, but Woodlawn is tentatively scheduled for widening and improvement in the year 2020. And that'll be city of Wichita, city of Bel Air, and eighty percent of that will be federal funds to do that. But it's not complete, it's not guaranteed, but it looks like it's going to go through.
Probably, yeah, it'd be a major project there.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you so much for coming. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address council this evening? If not, we'll move on to reports. Start with the council members. We'll start, I think, this time, Ms. Martine.
No report, Mayor.
Ms. Nguyen?
Just reporting that I did attend the volunteer party. I guess that's what we were calling it, and a lot of staff there, some of those that we don't see all the time, and a good representation of volunteers. Don't know what it's going to take to get more volunteers to show up. I guess they're too busy volunteering somewhere else. So, but anyway, it was fun, fun evening.
Ms. O'Donnell?
I do want to remind everyone, school does start tomorrow at sunrise, and I do appreciate what you said, because there's, a lot of times I do leave the school and I come around on Hedro, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, because it definitely is something I would like and to look at. I sound like a broken record, but I want to thank you guys again for your patience, as I had to have another surgery, so I've had three this summer I had not planned on, had to have a kind of a little emergency on Sunday the seventh, so I'm sorry I missed the workshop on the ninth, but I did watch it. And then, I appreciate all of your work, you guys on staff, on the budget that you did that we'll be talking about, because I know that was a lot of work, and I just appreciate how we're streaming it, because I was able to recover and watch it, and so I appreciate that. And then, I did, I'm sure you, most of you got your email from Laura Rainwater about the Sedgwick County Association of Cities is starting back up in September. Hayesville is hosting the first one on September tenth, and I'm going to plan on going to that. She did ask for cities, and I sent her an email, and I told her it was tentative, because obviously I need permission of staff, and the mayor, and the other council, but May was open, so if we could maybe look at May of hosting. We've done it before, and it kind of worked out well for our city, but I in no way could speak, obviously, for the whole city, but if you, Mr. Lasher, and staff, and mayor, and others would look and see if that's something we want to do, and I told her we could confirm, maybe she'd like us to let her know by September, October meeting, but it's always a nice to show off our city. I think it's a great thing if we can do that, and if that doesn't work, maybe another month.
And it's been a couple of years since we've done it, hasn't it?
Yes, because we haven't done it. Last year, they actually had to go to different places in Wichita. They went to the water department and other places, Botanica, because cities didn't step up, and that obviously costs Wichita money, and so they're really wanting cities to try to step in and host, and I think it'd be a really nice thing for our city to do at some point this year. We have a beautiful facility, and we could show it off, and so, anyway, and just like I said then, just remember, slow down. I don't know when resurrection, does it start this week too? Do you know, Mr. Lasher?
It starts this week, I'm not sure.
Okay, so, and sunrise starts tomorrow for junior high, so just be ready, because those, the speed will change in the mornings, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Becker?
I just want to say that I'm sorry I wasn't in town to attend the volunteer party or the pool party for all of the dogs in town. I really hated to miss both of those events, but I did need to go spend some time with my daughter in California, and I did have a wonderful time, perfect weather out there, but it was nice to get back home, too, so, that's all I have to report.
Wonderful, thank you. And, yeah, the hot dogs, pool party yesterday, I just want to give a big shout out to Tristan and to the Community Development Committee, all of our volunteers who worked for several months to put that on. I, I mean, the first thirty minutes, I think there were maybe a hundred dogs through those fir-, I mean, it was just, and at one point, we actually had people waiting. And if it gets much bigger, we may have to look at something. It was fantastic. Yeah, did we ever get a final count? My guess would be over three hundred, but...
There were a hundred and eighty dogs that brought in nine hundred dollars, and I would guess there were three hundred people there, because a lot of dogs bought several of their own.
That was fantastic. And KSN, I know was out there, interviewed me, managed at KWCH, and they taped, and of course, Millie was there. I got a chance to catch a little bit of the Channel Twelve news that runs at nine o'clock, but I don't know if I stayed awake until ten o'clock, and then Channel Three was after the Olympics, and, yeah, I go to bed early, so I, but I DVR'd it, but I did understand that...
I didn't see it.
Did not, okay, but...
I didn't see it.
I know it was on the nine o'clock news.
Channel Twelve had it on.
Okay, Channel Twelve had it, so, yeah, I'm not sure if Channel Three did, but it was just great to have them all there, and I appreciate Councilmember Nguyen coming out to the volunteer and employee cookout that we had Sunday evening, too. That was a lot of fun with the luau theme, and it's hard to imagine we're closing the pool already for the season. Summer seems like it started yesterday. And then, finally, I would just echo what Councilmember O'Donnell said, that, yeah, with, you know, we, here in Bel Air, we're very fortunate. We have students who go to Circle High School, and Circle Schools, and we have students who go to two-five-nine schools, and we have students who go to resurrection, and we have students who go to sunrise. Bottom line is, there's going to be a lot of kids out, a lot of kid drivers, too, in the mornings, so just be extra careful. School buses are going to be out. I've seen a few doing their test runs, so I hope everybody has a safe fall. I guess we're already talking about that, so... With that, move on to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items, though. One, I thought was pretty exciting, and that is that the city was named the third safest city in Kansas from Safewise, and they looked at a number of statistics to rank cities, and so, we were pretty pleased last year, we were on the top, in the top ten, but I think we were down like at seven, so we moved up to number three. And I think we could then also claim that we're the safest city in the Wichita metro, because the two above us were Johnson County. So, I think we could say that we're the safest Wichita, Sedgwick County metro. So, that was kind of neat. Those things are always nice for marketing, because we know we have a safe community here, but it's nice when validated by another group, and so... And then, the thing I wanted to mention, too, is, hard to believe, but September fifth is Labor Day, and Louisville City Hall will be closed that day. Of course, we have two meetings, actually, this is a long month for us, so we've got two meetings before our next council meeting, so we close on Monday, and then council on Tuesday, so, that's all I had, Mayor.
Wonderful. We'll move next into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The first before council this evening is adopting our 2017 operating budget that was published. We had two fairly lengthy workshops, we had the public hearing, it was published, followed all of the steps, and then I'm glad to say, we started a couple months earlier than we have, and that other cities did. We, so we've been working on this proposed 2017 budget since early June, actually. Again, we had the public hearing, that was August ninth. It's been published in the Ark Valley News, which is our city of record, or newspaper of record. I'm, again, happy to say that our 2017 budget before council tonight contains no mill increase, a zero mill increase, and it also adds a quarter of a million dollars for capital equipment funds, as well as, drumroll please, four hundred thousand dollars towards streets. This speaks volumes to the health of our city. You know, Mr. Lasher just talked about us being, you know, one of the safest cities. What he failed to mention, too, was at that same time, we had a growth expansion, quite a large growth expansion, too, so that's a lot of new citizens that came in, too, at the same time. So, as we move forward, the, again, as I look at the budgets, and I read the paper, and I hear about other cities around us, there's not a lot of cities, especially here in this area, that can say they have a zero mill increase. And not only do we have a zero mill increase, our taxes are kind of in the middle of the road. There's a number of cities that have higher taxes than us of our size, and I'd just like to remind everybody in the audience, and everybody listening at home, our staff gets to work with fifty percent of that because of our debt service. So, again, my hat is off to our staff, and our hat is off to our city, and I would certainly encourage adoption of the budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I want to echo what you said. I appreciate all that's gone into this, so I would like to make a motion to adopt the city of Bel Air 2017 budget as published, and authorize the governing body to sign.
Second. We have a first and second. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to check with Ted. That cost of living adjustment is still included in the budget, but it is not definitely going to go to the cost of, to a cost of living adjustment. Just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I call for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty. So, you're next. Item B is considering a resolution. B, C, and D kind of all goes together, the resolutions for chapel landing, water, sewer, and paving. Council accepted the water paving and sewer petitions for chapel landing, second edition. That was at our August second meeting, which was our last regularly scheduled meeting. Since the improvements are going to be funded through temp notes, and ultimately, they'll go to GO bonds, council must approve resolutions to allow public financing for this to move forward. Items B and C and D are separate resolutions, but again, it's for paving, and then it's for sewer, and then it's for water, so we have to do these individually, but again, they all do kind of run together, but hopefully, if council is comfortable with the resolution moving forward financing for this public infrastructure. Again, this is more growth coming here, certainly entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements, improvements in the city of Bel Air, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such finding, paving improvements, chapel, landing, second addition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have first and second, are there any questions? Again, resolution on paving. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the resolution for sanitary sewer improvements.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, which, parentheses, sanitary sewer improvements, chapel landing second addition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the final resolution with this group is for water.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of improvements in accordance with such findings for the water distribution system in chapel landing second addition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Next, again, more growth, more expansion to talk about. This is approving the final plat for Sunflower Commerce Park, edition number two, our second edition. What was it, about last week, I got to attend the closing and sign a bunch of documents and see the check coming in, and this is exciting, and I met with the owner, who is bringing Epic Sports here to our Sunflower Commerce Park here in Bel Air. Since this is the first new business in phase two, we're ready to complete the final plat. PEC was hired to finalize the plat, and staff, you know, staff is now ready for completion to work on that. The planning commission wants you to know that they approved this plat at their August eleventh meeting, and now it comes before council, and I know it's in our packet, it's up on the screen as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the final plat for Sunflower Commerce Park second, and authorize all requirement signatures.
Second.
First and second, are there questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? F, item F is what we talked about in our last workshop, and that is appointing Anne Stevens and Diane Nguyen to our, to the WAMPO, Paul, and REAP, or to WAMPO, excuse me. WAMPO is the regional planning organization that distributes federal monies to local jurisdictions. You heard Councilmember McDonald talk about, you know, the Woodlawn Project, you know, so that was a, a big part of that. Bel Air has one voting delegate and one alternate on the policy board. Mr. McDonald has served as the voting delegate, and city engineer Anne Stevens as the alternate to this board for the last couple of years. And so, we are now asking, after a guy stated he'd like to maybe cut back a little bit, we certainly respect that entirely, that we kind of, that we let Anne move up, and she has said that she's willing to serve, but that Anne could be the voting delegate, with Diane being the alternate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Anne Stevens to the WAMPO policy board, and Diane Nguyen as the alternate.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is appointing Diane Nguyen to the REAP Board of Directors. I got a little ahead of myself there a minute ago, but as a member of the Regional Economic Area Partnership, REAP, we maintain a seat on the Board of Directors, and Diane, right now, is the lead... on the Board of Directors, and Diane, right now, is the legislative committee alternate and is interested in serving on the Board of Directors as well. Is there a motion to appoint Diane to this position?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Diane Nguyen as the REAP Board of, to the REAP Board of Directors.
Second.
First and second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. And before moving on to the next item, I'd just like to thank Councilmember McDonald, who is a little over two years of service on those boards and bringing reports to us and going to those meetings. So thank you, sir. Okay, and we know that Diane will serve us well as well. So, next is item H. This is a sign ordinance. We just finished the primary, but the general is coming. Kind of like that old saying, it's Friday, but Sundays are coming, huh? It's coming around here. But the Kansas Legislature made some changes this year to the political sign code, and these changes override our local codes. So as a result, our city attorney updated our Bel Air sign language to include these state changes into municipal code. We discussed this at our August 9th workshop, and it's now before council for final action.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance concerning the amendment of Chapter 17, Article 9 of the municipal code of Bel Air, Kansas, in connection with the location of signs on public rights of way, public easement for planned unit development, all within the city of Bel Air, Sedgwick County, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have first and second. Are there questions or comments? I'm hearing none, but since this is an ordinance, it calls for a roll vote. Dr. Mona Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
And it passes. Next item, item I, is consideration of a governmental services agreement for limited animal control by Sedgwick County. And again, this is something we discussed a couple of workshops back and have been working on since then. But basically, what happened in 2015, the county realized that they had different agreements with a lot of the cities, including Bel Air, so, you know, because we had to contain contracted services with them. So as a result, the county ended all these agreements and has spent the last year updating their agreement, so that each city receives the exact same services when it comes to animal control. This agreement allows Bel Air to utilize Sedgwick County animal control. You know, this would be for the pickup of stray animals, as well as unfortunately dead animals and any type of animal calls, which I, I like the idea of having someone who's trained in all of that, is able to handle those situations, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the government, governmental service agreement with limited animal control services with Sedgwick County, and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second.
Yeah, first and second. Are there questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Item J, which we added at the beginning of this meeting, is for Kansas paving agreement. At our last meeting, staff presented three bids for asphalt and two bids for concrete to pave the cul-de-sac in phase four of Rock Spring. Two contractors were over the engineer's estimate with their bids, and Kansas paving came in below. Council voted to reject all of those bids, all bids above the engineer's estimate at that meeting. Since then, staff has met with Kansas paving and is recommending now that council accept the bid for concrete paving from Kansas paving.
So moved.
First, is there a second? First and second. Any questions or comments? Just like I say, I appreciate staff going back, and I think we're all kind of floored at the last meeting when those came in, so I'm glad to know that we can move forward with this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain, because I just got the memo on this and haven't really had time to fully digest it, so I'd rather abstain than vote on this.
And we do have the three to one to one vote in the record. Okay. Thank you, all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have some comments to make. I'm very familiar with bidding process, I'm very familiar with bid bonds. I did that for a long time, and I am told by authority that Kansas paving wishes to withdraw their bid, and because they made a nerf of some kind, and it apparently is in their, in their estimation of approximately twenty thousand dollars, which is considerable. Now, just to let people know that I know what I'm talking about, I carpeted the Fourth National Bank downtown, I carpeted Mays High School, I carpeted Northwest High School, I've carpeted the Aviation Center down at the airport, I've carpeted multiple, multiple other commercial businesses. And if you're in business long enough, it's inevitable that you're going to make a mistake. And the typical good business response is, if you make a mistake and you're low bidder, you do the job, and you take the loss, and that's the way it works. And if anyone wishes to withdraw their bid, then I say that it's contemplated that we will take the five percent bid bond and cash it, and that'll be it. But for a business to withdraw after the fact, I think is very un-businesslike and I think untenable. End of my comments.
All right. Move next into discussion and future issues. Is there any business anybody would like to bring up before council? I have no need for an executive session. Does anybody else, or city manager, city attorney? Seven thirty-seven, this almost seems...
Is this a new record?
I think so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have first and second. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We are adjourned.